If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
At this time, if we could get a motion for the approval of the agenda, it does look like it's been amended to add the discussion of a confidential written legal opinion with the city attorney to the closed session, an additional one, correct?
Correct.
Make a motion to amend, to approve the agenda with the amendment of the additional item in closed session.
Support.
Councilmember Spolman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward that you state your first name and then also write down your full name and address for the clerk. It would be appreciated.
This is for a tall person? Mike Philiamany. My law partners and I own a building at 120 West Harris, and I've been meaning to come and thank you for a year now, and that's for the Cadillac Commons. I can't tell you how nice it is, no matter how stressful the day, to walk out of my office at noon, to take a little walk, get some lunch, and hear all the laughing and screaming and fun going on at the splash pad. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I just want to start off saying happy Hanukkah to all our Jewish brothers and sisters. My name's Randy. I live on Howard Street, Cadillac. Just a few public comments I'd like to make. Hey, and I'm glad to see a full council for the first time in about three months or better. Congratulations. A couple of items. The Cadillac community has an ongoing hunger problem. Our children are going to bed at night hungry, crying. Homeless veterans. We have a huge Christmas food drive going on right now. And now the city council is asking for a block grant fund of almost a million dollars. Hey, I own three houses in the Cadillac area. A lot of them are 100 years old or better. I have lead and asbestos situations, and that's what we have to deal with, but I have to address those issues myself. So, the last thing is, hey, where's Robin Hood today? You know, look what's happening in Paris right now. The rioting. I'm in solidarity with Yellow tonight. High taxes, high cost of living. And I also just want to express my couple of comments to the council in support of the homeless shelter. We have homeless veterans walking their streets. I just seen a gentleman, I was gonna give him my coat off my back and a tee shirt walking down Mitchell Street. And so I'm in full support of the New Hope Shelter relocation. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda, which this evening includes the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and that takes us to our first public hearing. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm going to very briefly introduce this item. This is a public hearing with respect to the community development block grant process that we are going through for the Cadillac Lofts Development Project. If council may recall, we went through a competitive process to bring on a certified community development block grant administrator. Here to present to the city council this evening is that administrator. Her name is Sarah Christensen, and she's with Venture North. And Sarah, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium, if you could then give the city council a run-through of what they're being asked to do in addition to just a quick summary of the project, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, yes, I'm Sarah Christensen from Venture North Funding and Development. We are a regional nonprofit economic development organization. We provide business financing and other services across the 10 county region, and we explore opportunities to expand regional, state, and national partnerships. Our mission is to support the region's economic growth and community development efforts by providing funding options, offering technical assistance, and building connections for viable businesses, including low to moderate communities. I have 10 years of experience in this field, and as Marcus mentioned, I am a certified grant administrator for the CDBG funds. So, the application that you're bringing forward today, I'm assisting the city in preparing that grant application to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. These are community development block grant funds, and we're requesting $907,100 for demolition and site preparation activities. These are to take place at 201, 207, and 215 South Mitchell Street, as well as 208 East Cass Street here in downtown Cadillac. The grant funds will be used for demolition to remove two blighted buildings. There's public infrastructure, architecture, and engineering, lead and asbestos abatement, pre-demolition services, and grant administration, all covered in that project cost. CDBG money is U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development funding that's allocated to each state. The national objective supported by this project is the elimination of spot blight. There will be no local funds paid by the City of Cadillac into this project at this time. No people will be displaced as a result of this project. We are going, we'll open it up for questions, and then the action by city commission tonight, or city council, is there's a resolution in front of you to adopt, and that will authorize city manager Marcus to sign the grant documents. And there's, as part of this project, there's also a community development plan that needs to be adopted tonight.
Two separate actions.
Two separate actions, yes. So we'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to have a seat, we'll open it up for public comment.
Hello. In the grant funding block monies, funds, et cetera, for this project, it stated it was gonna be like 750,000 K. Now, she just stated that it's 900 and some hundred K. No tax, city tax dollars now at this time, but, yes, but, is it down the line? City tax funds for this project. So anyways, no public tax dollars for private business. The City of Cadillac Council and city manager must not allow the block grant funding at the city council public hearing on December 3, 2018. No public tax dollars or funds should be used for any corporation business or individual to become wealthier on grant money. We were at three-quarters of a million, now we're up to nine. If you can't build it on the entrepreneurial business venture, then we shouldn't build it, and that's just...
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the council. Does anybody have any questions for Sarah?
I have a question, Mayor, and I guess it is directed to Sarah. She would probably know better than anyone unless Marcus knows. But what are the chances of us getting this grant? It seems like a lot of money, and are we just throwing, you know, a nut out there and hoping that we catch something, or is it a strong possibility that we're getting it?
Do you want to answer, or do you...
I would, I would say that after meeting with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Community Development Block Grant officials in Lansing, along with the development team that are looking at building Cadillac Lofts, in addition to our community development specialist from the MEDC side of the business as well, it was made very clear that this is not a process that we're just simply doing for the purposes of an exercise. They were very optimistic that this project would be awarded a grant for these purposes. Obviously, until the paperwork is submitted, there is no guarantee, but it was made very clear that we would be very seriously considered to receive the award. In fact, as a part of the conversation, when we were looking at a smaller number based on the estimates that were known earlier this spring, the question came from them saying, you know, is there something else that we need to look, look at? Are you comfortable with that number? It's okay to go higher if necessary. So it was a very good exchange and left us, I think, all with, and Sarah was not part of the conversation at that point in time, but it left us all with a very good feeling that this was going to happen for us. And that is what then led to the city moving forward hand in hand with the state, helping us with this process and bringing a certified grant administrator on, which is Sarah, because that, that process in and of itself took several months to do. This application itself is taking several months to do. So there's a tremendous amount of work that's happening sort of behind the scenes that has brought us to the point where we're at now. This is one of perhaps two or even more block grants that we're gonna be looking at trying to get for this project and perhaps for some others around the city. So we're all cutting our teeth, if you will, on this first one, but we're certainly very optimistic that we're going to get it. And, you know, part of what is also sort of a silver lining with all of this is that it's a zero local match. So they're not all going to be like that, but this one is.
Marcus, do you, do we know that there is a lead and/or asbestos issue there?
So the developers have gone through and had some environmental analyses conducted. So yes, they're aware of what the contamination is on the site. There is a representative from Cadillac Lofts here tonight, and he might want to address it, so...
Hi, Dean DeCrager with the DK Design Group, representing Cadillac Lofts. Yes, there has been a full environmental study done, and that actually is why the number from earlier numbers has increased. We have found that there is, on each of the buildings that are going to be raised, under the membrane roof, there is a built-up asphalt roof which is asbestos impregnated. So the entire roof of both buildings has asbestos. There is also, in the former Olson's building, several areas of asbestos floor tile. So there's a lot of asbestos in that building. There is some lead in various areas, some of it, one of the spots, has to do with actually the AT&amp;T line that comes as lead encased in a vault underneath there. So there is also soil contamination where the former dry cleaners was, and there's, under the clock tower area, when we did soil borings, there is a lot of rubble down below there that we're not positive what it is. So that, the numbers to remove that rubble and do engineered fill is also included in that.
Do we know how old the former Olson building is?
I don't, off the top of my head. We probably can find that, but I don't know how old it is.
I thought you might just have that.
Mm-mm.
Lot of cleanup.
I, I don't mean to steal the floor from all of you, but one other question related to this whole demolition project, then, so it's for where Emmington's was, and where the, it's the former Olson store, but it's not where GND is in this phase.
Correct. The first phase does not include GNDs or their parking lot. They will be kept operational. It includes the demolition of the Olson site, the demolition of the, what was photo one, and then Emmington, the removal of the clock tower and its foundations, some grading, and also reworking the stormwater underneath, because we need to, as we're demoing it, make sure we don't cause a water problem as we go. So we're also reworking the storm sewer under the parts that are affected, as well as the total abatement for all the items I listed earlier.
I guess this is a question for Marcus. So what happens if we do come in over budget, we find extra remediation? And then I guess what happens too if we come in under budget and it's not needed?
Might be a question better for Sarah, actually.
So if there are any changes in the budget, there would be an amendment to the grant, and so either way, we would go back to MEDC and make an amendment. I think that you've, the team that's worked on the budget has tried to err on the side of caution, and, so that there won't be an overage. I think that was the goal. And so hopefully, we won't see it go that way, but in that case, we would go back to MEDC and ask for an amendment.
So what if it went the other way and we came in under budget?
We would amend it down, and the money would just go back into the CDBG pot to the state to redispers again.
Good. Good questions.
Yeah. So is anybody at a point where they'd like to make a motion?
I would go ahead and make a motion to adopt the authorization resolution as presented.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
So then we need a motion on the community develop-
That's correct.
-the community development plan as presented. I need to look at that one more time.
And if I may, just for clarification, that at this point, the public hearing is closed.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt the community development plan as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Under the table, thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can't take her anywhere.
If I may, we have bid the demolition. The plan is to start-
Can you step up there so everyone can hear you?
We have bid the demolition of those projects. It looks like we're where we hope to be, and if all goes as expected, depending on when this grant comes through, we are planning to start construction yet first thing in the spring, so we're trying.
Good luck, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then that takes us to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The city manager's report, here's just one item this evening. I wanted to take a moment during the council meeting tonight just to iterate how proud I am of our city and our utilities department. We issued a news release out last week indicating that we are essentially free from two chemicals, and I am not going to try to pronounce their names.
Just say PFAS.
Yes, yes. One is PFOA, and one is PFOS, and then the, the sort of commonly-known acronym that describes both is PFAS. PFAS. In our, in our water supply, it came back as non-detect. As you may recall, earlier, earlier this year, we were awarded the 2018 Best Tasting Michigan Water Award, which was something that we're also very, very proud about. However, that, you know, doesn't necessarily talk at all about the safety of our water. This isn't necessarily like a recognition, but the results of this test is really, really welcoming. You know, there's a number of communities that are testing positive for this. The, the sort of benchmark is that you have to be under a score of 10 in order to, to, you know, still have safe, quote-unquote, "safe" water. 70 is, is the top of that, that benchmark. We have a non-detect, which means that it, there's not enough to render any results at all. We had the old well field in the old industrial area tested by the state, along with the well field along Crosby Road tested by the state. We proactively tested the new, soon-to-be-new, new well field site off of 44 Road tested, because should there have been anything there, we would have wanted to install various filters and whatnot, and plan for it accordingly. We are happy to report that we also received through that individual test that we did, a non-detect on that site as well. So I just wanted to mention publicly, and to the board publicly, that we got a great clean slate, great, you know, bill of health here, non-detects all across the board, and, you know, certainly open for business, so...
Wonderful.
Yeah, nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
So this evening, we do have an introduction of ordinance, or, excuse me, yes, an introduction of an ordinance. Sandy? Is that you, or is that Marcus?
No, that'll, that'll, yeah, that'll be me. That'll be me.
Oh, okay, sorry, Sandy. I didn't mean to-
Sandy's willing to take it, though.
So thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is an introduction of an ordinance that amends our zoning ordinance regarding the combination group slash family shelters, and sets a public hearing for December 17, 2018. The information in the council's city agenda packet, public meeting packet, it's also online, outlines the whole, the whole story and provides all the details. I'm not going to read everything in the, everything in the packet, but I will focus on a couple of, a couple of the salient points. Just generally speaking, though, before I start reading the language out of the packet, officials from the New Hope Shelter approached the city some time ago to talk about some opportunities that they may be having in regard to their future business plans and operating plans for providing these services in our community. They are at a point now where they're looking at a chunk of land adjacent to the newly-constructed Wexford County Jail facility, where they would like to potentially install a building that's, that as I understand, is possibly being donated to them for the purposes of consolidating their sheltering services that are currently operational in several single-family home, homes, basically, within the city and even outside of the city. And so in order for, you know, for them to really seriously consider moving forward with that plan, and not having their application just simply rejected based upon the zoning, the city first needed to digest this concept and then bring it to the Planning Commission for consideration before we could look at having them even fill out an application for us. And so that's basically where we are right now, which is the Planning Commission has had their hearing, their public hearing, and have agreed that this does make good sense for this organization, if they're able to, to build this singular facility and then consolidate their shelters into the one site, and then shutter the other facilities down. And so I'm gonna skip now to the packet to just read some of the more detailed language with respect to the changes to the zoning code. And so I'm skipping down basically to the, the first bullet on the first page. It says, "The proposed new zoning regulations would include the following: language which would reduce by two hours the time for which residents would have to be away from the facility, going from eight to six hours. New Hope Shelter will be attempting to reduce the time further if possible. This should reduce the amount of time residents have to spend in other warm and public buildings within the community. New maximum bed count for a combination group slash family shelter of 60 beds. This new maximum would not automatically be permitted, but would be contingent on any applicant during the special use permit process demonstrating that any proposed bed count is needed to meet the current homeless need within the greater Cadillac area." And then the third bullet, "Separated communal space between men's and women's group shelters contained within the new combination group slash, group slash family shelter facility. The Planning Commission, at their meeting on November 26, 2018, and after a public hearing unanimously approved the proposed zoning amendments as presented and recommended their approval by the city council. If these amendments are approved after the city council hosts their public hearing, that public hearing would be at your next meeting. The next step would be for the New Hope Shelter would be for them to file a rezoning of their proposed site into either an RM1 or RM2 zoning district. This rezoning would require public hearings and action before both the Planning Commission and the city council. If the rezoning is successful, the final step would be for New Hope Shelter to submit a special land use permit request before the Planning Commission." So basically, there's, there's one more chunk of information that I wanted to add, and that's, and that's that the New Hope organization isn't looking as a part of this process to add additional heads-on beds, but rather replace those that are already in existence by relocating them to, to this newer consolidated facility. If something should change, however, and additional heads-on beds is something that's necessary, the provision within the zoning code that the city council approved about a year or so ago still is in play, where they would have to show the local demand for that increase. So it's not as if by going through this process and resetting the zoning parameters somehow or another equals adding the approval for a much larger or bigger facility. That's not what the mission or the objective is, so... John Wallace is here this evening. He could certainly answer any questions. And then we also have a slide presentation planned for the city council for the public hearing that's gonna take place, presumably take place at your next meeting. The slide presentation will by and large be the same one that was shown- be the same one that was shown to the planning commission as a part of their process as well, so.
Time for questions.
Time for questions.
And I think John may help with this one.
Oh, yeah.
I had a call today, John, and I didn't get a chance to follow up. It indicated that the paper had indicated making this possible in R1 and R2. And I thought that was probably a typo if the paper said that, so I thought it would be good to clarify.
Yes. The zoning districts for this new combination group/family shelter would only be the RM1 and the RM2, which are our two targeted districts for multifamily development. They would not be permitted in the R1 or R2 or any of the single-family districts. Not only would they not be allowed in the single-family districts, but they wouldn't be allowed in the B1, B2, B3, OS1, or OS2, which in the prior scenario was set up for the smaller group shelters. So, all those districts were taken off the table, and it was restricted to just the RM1 and the RM2.
Thank you, John.
Where are we currently zoned for RM1 and R2?
I think you all have zoning maps on your-
Bunch of places.
I can, at the public hearing, I can-
What's the definition of RM1 and 2?
I think it stands for residential multiple. And I can have, I can add some slides that isolate the RM1 and R2 on the city map for the public hearings, just so that you can see exactly where that would be. In this case, they'd be filing a rezoning into that, so it would be a new one. But despite where the current ones are, the restrictions that you put in place before, which was not within 500 feet of the lake frontage, not within the downtown development authority, not within the historic districts, regardless of whether there was an RM1 or RM2 in those areas, they would not be eligible either for the new type of facility.
So, it looks like the RM1s and RM2s are in places where we already have existing
multi-family unit housing.
Is that correct?
Yes.
In what block or what area by the jail are they looking to re-
Right behind the Nazarene Church.
Right behind the Nazarene Church.
So, it's on the south side of the drive going into the-
So, right now it's zoned R2?
Yep, I think it's RM1 right now, if I'm looking at it correctly.
It's- It looks like it's R2.
That's what it looks like to me.
Oh, there we go.
It's R2.
Yeah.
D2.
And, you know, we'll have a full analysis when we get to the rezoning process that will look at all the current zoning, but not only the current zoning, but all the changes that we made in the master plan document as well. I think we took a lot of that corridor along Cass and have retargeted that for a lot of institutional churches, office, and similar types of development. And so, this would be very close to those more intense uses as well. But I would have a full report talking about all the things that may be happening in that area and what's also included in our master plan.
I will-
Thank you, John.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance, amending zoning ordinance regarding combination group/family shelters and set a public hearing for December 17.
Support.
House Member Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item on your agenda is a request to adopt a resolution that approves an agreement to buy real estate near 44 Road. This is something I'm going to ask Jeff Dietlin to provide a little bit of a backdrop on. There are some documents at your place that show a map of the area. I do want to just provide a quick summary, I believe. And if you, give me one second here to my, get to the right page. The city is looking at acquiring just a tad over, I believe, 23 acres adjacent to the new well field site we're in the process of developing along 44 Road. The sale price that we have agreed to with the seller is the appraised value, which is a good thing, and that is $120,000 accordingly. There is one small change in the agreement, the agreement that is on your table in front of you on page three, a simple swapping of words, if you will, under BI currently reads, "Buyer shall install a gravel," excuse me, "a paved access drive, which shall be paved consistently with the existing paved drive." The small change that I would like council to consider as a part of your activity this evening, or action this evening, would be to change that to read, "Buyer shall install a gravel access drive, which may be paved consistently with the existing paved drive." And then the rest of the paragraph is fine, just as it is. Jeff, if you could please grab the mic nearest you-
Yes.
And just perhaps give an overview for the public as to the benefit of acquiring this property and the city council highlighting the areas. Obviously, thank you for putting that map together. It shows you, that'd be great.
As the city council knows and the public, hopefully, we had bought in a piece of property on 44 Road in the red. It's in the red on the map. We had bought in that a few years ago. We tested it for water quality. It tested really well for water quality. And we went back and tested it for PFAS recently, and it came back non-detect. After we bought that property, the sections in the green became open to us, and it would allow us to use our property to the full extent. Before that time, we would have to, we would be able to put three, maybe four wells on that property. Acquiring this other property would allow us, if we needed to, to put all seven of our wells onto this property. We would still like and continue to have two, currently two facilities, one on Crosby Road and one on 44 Road. But if something ever happened to the Crosby Road wells, we would have more than enough property to go on here to do all of the city water. Also, the configuration of where we'd place our headquarters, instead of the back north corner of the property, we'd actually be on the west edge of the property. And it just configures a little better. We can do it without this property, but it really enhances the use that we get from our property if we can buy this extra property.
Just to interrupt and go back-
Go ahead.
I think, you know, our utilities director hit it on the head. You know, when we originally acquired the property, this wasn't something that was available. And then, when it became available, we seriously took a look at acquiring it, but we ended up not moving in time to do so. So, this opportunity is back in front of us now, and we think it makes the most sense to do so as it essentially future-proofs this very important operation for the city. The city attorney also went ahead and further clarified the change in that one paragraph. And Mike, if you can just read what you wrote. I like your version better.
Yes, so this is for B1, which would now read, "Buyer shall install a connected gravel access drive on the real estate in a location to be reasonably determined by the parties and is generally shown on exhibit A. The gravel access drive shall be of a kind and quality as to be ready for paving and may be paved by buyer in its sole discretion and at a time of its choosing. If buyer determines to pave the gravel access drive, it shall be paved consistently with the existing paved drive." And then the rest of that paragraph would remain the same.
I like it.
Good. Can you talk to us for a second, Jeff, about the road to the improvement on the property and what, how we would have need to put a road in?
Yeah, currently, we have no access road to our property. We'd have to build an access road off of 44 Road, which would be okay. On the property we're acquiring, there is currently a paved road. We would actually overlay that with another layer of pavement, but our engineer estimates that it would save us about $70,000, just by this road that exists there. She's using that, and we would not have to put in our own new paved road in gravel and everything on top of that. So, by acquiring this, even though we're paying, you know, quite a bit for it, we, the bill would actually be $70,000 less. If, we'd have to spend that $70,000, whether we're paying for this property or putting a road in our own property. That $70,000 would be spent. So, we're just, instead of putting in a road, we're buying property with that money. That has road on it already.
And Jeff, if I understand it correctly, too, by getting this land that surrounds ours, from a health-safety standpoint, our headquarters goes there more easily. The actual wells that go in are more protected and easily taken care of.
Yes, obviously, more, the more property we have around a well, the more protected we can be of that well. That would certainly be an added benefit for having this property, that it would, it would definitely protect our walls more from any potential contamination that might be spilled around the area.
Just if I may slip into the conversation publicly, I'd like to also say that what this will eventually lead to as well, especially since we'll have the space to relocate operations, it'll lead to the eventual vacation of our site in the old industrial park. Now, while there are some encumbrances to that property currently that would need to get negotiated and perhaps even voted on by the people, that would provide the city of Cadillac with, you know, over a dozen acres, perhaps closer to two dozen acres, of very prime property for redevelopment in the industrial use, which is really going to be important to have as we sold most of the contiguous industrial property available about a year or so ago to Piranha Hose Products. So, you know, this is, a lot of, a lot of good things are starting to fall into place as we near the final phase of this construction of the well field, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the agreement to buy and sell real estate near 44 Road in Cadillac, Michigan.
Support.
Do we need to have with the amendment says-
Oh, right.
As presented.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah.
With the amendment as read by the city attorney as presented.
I support that.
House Member Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we also had the minutes and reports of the boards and commissions. And this evening, we have the zoning board of appeals along with the planning commission. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment.
I just want to reiterate, we have children going to bed hungry in the greater Cadillac area. We have our homeless veterans on the streets freezing. We need shelter for them. Developers are becoming more wealthier in Cadillac. Aren't I'm, that's corporate welfare at its best, I see. I could be wrong.
Thank you.
Can we go hunting, Jeff, on that new property?
Oh, it's in the city.
Okay, we'll move to good at the order. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Just one quick item for everyone to know. The city is playing some seasonal music down on the plaza, on a timer when the timer works. Generally speaking, from about 11:00 in the morning till 10:00 in the evening, music is not at a very loud level. You could really only hear it if you're down in front of the Christmas tree or on the synthetic ice rink. But would encourage everyone to, you know, quickly stop by and try to enjoy some seasonal fare there. The ice rink does use regular ice skates, so please bring your skates to try it out.
Steve?
I, you know, there are so many exciting things happening in Cadillac now. And I think it's important for the public to note, especially with the concerns, I don't think we'd be able to clean up that area of Cadillac the way we're going to put in such nice developments for people to be able to live and be part of the community without the grant writing that's being talked about. And that, actually, it's a positive. And through providing reasonable market rate housing and places for people to work, we actually increase the ability to do more for people in our community. And I know Marcus was part of a meeting I went to this week, and you guys may have known about the new passenger train that they're talking about, trying to work through, and Cadillac can be a part of, that's going to generate jobs and be just wonderful for our economy. And the challenges we have now for what we're doing with DK going in, that we're going to have to deal with some parking issues to help promote our businesses, help our developers, help our pedestrian people. Those are exciting challenges. Those are positive challenges, and I'm excited to do it, and I'm excited for our citizens to have those additions.
I'm glad you brought up parking, because I wanted to talk a little bit about it. You're right, we're going to start having challenges now with parking, and people might have to walk a block instead of parking right in front of their retail establishment or restaurant. That being said, I hope that, my understanding is, and maybe we can explore this a little bit more as a council, because I remember, you know, we haven't really done anything related to how we designated our parking downtown since we got rid of the parking meters years ago. But my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that near the central downtown area, most of the streets have parking that is two hours. It's posted two hours parking, and it's free. So, I hope that we're monitoring that, you know, and that we're ticketing if people are abusing that. Because what we need to make sure of is that those spaces are available for the customers that come in and out of those businesses. I remember the summer going by a certain area and seeing the same vehicles there all day long, you know, on one of our really popular side streets. And so, I just, I think we need to monitor them and make sure that, you know, staff is parking in the designated staff areas and that we're leaving those other areas open for people who need to shop and do business downtown.
Tell me if I'm stepping on your toes. One of the neat things, Councilmember Spohman, when we were at the MML convention down in Grand Rapids, and we actually went to the meeting with the Ann Arbor planner, one of the things they talked about is you want to encourage people to use the parkings there and to walk if you can. And what I hope to see that goes along with your saying, making sure we're watching the utilization of those spaces. But Ann Arbor had a great perspective of people coming from out of Cadillac being customers. And the city could even consider a parking authority that does a valet program, especially while we've got development going on, so that we utilize the lots that we have in outlying areas, so people can come to the businesses. They would have a valet take their car to the public space. I think Ann Arbor even had an app that then they signal when they need their car to come back. So, as we're going through these types-
Really cool thing.
Yeah.
They do it in Nashville.
But your point's well taken, because we've got these new businesses, they've got to be able to have their customers park. We, I think they even, they did a parking authority, so they got to keep the valet fees to use for future development of other parking options. to use for future development of other parking options.
The other thing that I thought of though is good signage, so that people know where they can park, you know? I mean, we just need to look at the whole thing.
Ideally, I'd love to be able to work out an agreement with some of the primary downtown sort of magnets that would benefit by a valet program, to offer them a public lot, perhaps the lot by City Hall, certain nights of the week, if not, if not every night of the week, where if they wanted to facilitate their own valet system, we would provide them with the space to be able to do that. Because even on some of the more busier evenings, you'll still always find plenty of parking a block or a block and a half off.
Right.
Especially in this, in this specific area. But these are all very good conversations, and as I think Steve, Councilmember King mentioned, these are good conversations to be having, because it shows the success that the community is having, that we're seeing some of these challenges coming in front of us. I can also comment, just all but briefly, that as we're looking at continuing to see additional new downtown development, especially that that's going to consist of a mix of residential and commercial components to it, parking and looking at developing a deck or even a deck with, with a cube, which is an automated type system.
Saw one of those this week.
Oh, did you? Cool. As a part of it, have been talked about, are continuing to be talked about, and while these are big conversations with sort of long, long-term solutions, it also does take some time to put together. Just as a very quick, for instance, there's the potential for utilizing community development block grant dollars yet again for another project that we're working on, just in its infancy stage, that could help to focus on the public infrastructure piece, that being parking. But it, you know, it just, it just all takes time to fall into place. Those pieces are starting to fall into place now. I couldn't say exactly when you're going to see this deck or this cube or, or this combo happening, but I would venture a guess that if it's going to be somewhere between, you know, two to four years before you'll see this development happening, it'll be within that same window, because it would be built at the same time that, that this new development's happening. So there's a lot of incredible opportunity ahead of us, along with these good conversations that are going to need to come too. Lots of stuff to keep us in business for a while here.
Such great things to be talking about. Yeah. We have a wonderful community, and it looks so great. Everybody worked on the lights and the tree and everything. It's just lovely. I just, you know, I love coming home when it's dark and driving around, taking a long way with the kids so they can Google the things.
Downtown looks great.
Downtown looks awesome.
We are, by the way, going to be looking potentially, you know, we, over the years, we've added more trees to the lakefront, especially along Chestnut Street, while at the same time, the donations of the lights and whatnot, they, they have not increased. And so I think what we might look at doing next year is relocating some of the singular strands of lights along, you know, sort of random trees down Chestnut Street to a more focused area within Cadillac Commons and the library to create more of a spectacular light display versus having, you know...
One string of light a block away.
So, either that or we need a hell of many more lights coming inside to make the difference up. But we do have a couple more items on the agenda.
Yes, we do. We do. So we do need to go into closed session this evening. So if someone is interested in taking on that motion to get us there?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the Wexford County Circuit Court Consolidated case, numbers 13-24803-CH and 17-27610-CZ, Terry D. LLC et al. versus Clam Lake Township and Herring Charter Township versus City of Cadillac, and Hop Family LLC, and the City of Cadillac versus Herring Charter Township and Clam Lake Township, and also to discuss a confidential written legal opinion with the city attorney. We'd like to invite Jeff Dietland, Director of Utilities, to join us.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.